Good morning. We're gonna ask that we'll all stand. Do you want to have a moment of silence in honor of deceased Commissioner John Horr? That is correct. Father, we come this morning thanking you for blessing us to see another day. Lord, we thank you for the privilege of serving the county to make decisions on business matters at hand. We ask, Lord, your wisdom and guidance as we go through this process. We thank you for all that you do, and how you bless our nation and our state and our county. Be with us now. We ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, unregarded and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will call our October 2nd County Commissioners Meeting to order. And first order on the agenda will be the approval of our amendments from our meeting of September 4th and a special meeting on September 16th.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
On the first page on 1312, under approval of amendments, it should be the amendment by change of the name, Lenderball to Deberball. It's flipped.
From Lender to Deberball.
Yes.
Instead of Deberball. In order to corrections, we entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Subway?
Second.
Subway, second. Hall in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those names. Thank you. All right, the next item will be the adjustments to our agenda. It looks like we have several. The first adjustment would be item 4B. And if you just make them B1 for request for refund. And under item 7, I'm sorry, item 8, 8-7, we'll make that a 7.1 or 7.8, appointment to the firefighter relief fund. Also, under item 8, we'll add an 8 for project ordinance. If you'll go back to 4B, we can make that 4BA, and we have a resolution honoring deceased I believe a closed session is already identified, but it will be to consult the attorney and also to discuss the matter. If there are no further adjustments, we entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Subway?
Second.
Motion, second. Hall in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those names. Our next item will be our delegations unannounced. Our first delegation will be, Assistant Commander will be Mr. Dan Lane.
Assistant County has come into possession of the prison property there. I know there's gonna be a lot of difficult suggestions of what to do with it. And I was talking to John the other day, about one possibility would be to move the Sheriff's Department out there and prison, I know we might have fallen out of the prison for some years, and that is a possibility. But I'm not personally locked into that. But whatever suggestions come up, I suggest that, Phil, I'll say, what do you call to bring into building the stuff up to date? And what return, what benefit would the county get from whatever's done?
Thank you. Lane? All right, the next will be Earl Roundtree.
I've got maybe three things. Earl Roundtree, for those who may watch this, there's three people that may watch this on video in the county in the minutes that don't know me. Number one, Linda, our history teacher, I want to spend about two minutes giving a little history lesson. Two of the, within what I call modern times, 150 years, we've had two tremendously great field commanders for the military. Both of them have been well-recognized. A lot of people though that don't study history may not even know about it. But of course, General Patton was noted and should in history to being the greatest field commander since the Roman Empire. But we had another one that was Thomas Jackson, Thomas Stonewall Jackson. So most kids that take any history, probably their history teacher would maybe call him Stonewall Jackson. The second, or maybe the greatest, probably greater than Patton, field commander. Well, Stonewall Jackson was killed by a North Carolinian, and this is something we've had to live with for years, and the people at Virginia Military Institute never will let you forget it if you go up there and say, "Where are you from?" And they say, "North Carolina." And they said, "Oh, you killed him. It was accident." But he got shot three times by a century. They took off his left arm. He was, of course, living. And when Robert E. Lee got the message that Stonewall had been shot and his left arm had been taken off, Robert E. Lee said, "General Jackson lost his left arm. I just lost my right arm." And the people here in Gates County, most of them realize that when Johnny Horr died, that they lost their right arm. But more than you will know, I know that I lost my right arm. Because I never, we talked in many cases early on about every day. And I was telling Jack here, I said, "You're probably gonna be the same way I am," is that you still can't realize that Johnny is dead. You've been to his funeral, you've been to the house, you've been to the funeral home, but I probably like Betty Jean and the family, you know? So I was sitting there, I usually don't spend over two hours a day watching TV, but if I'm home and not at a meeting somewhere, I sit back, watch a movie, relax. And last night, I was sitting there in the middle of a movie, and at 8:42, the phone rings. And for a half a second, Jack, it was like, this is the time of the night that Johnny usually calls me, because he will know that I'm watching the middle of a movie, and he's gonna return the call at that time, somewhere between 8:00 and 9:30. But for that split second, I really, you know, it was in my mind, but then I said, "It can't be Johnny Horr." Well, I wanted to say this because as Kenny Jernigan told me more than one time, he says, "You've got the politics in your blood and you can't get it out. You love it." Well, I don't know if I do or don't love it, Kenny, but I'm drug into a lot of things. And sometimes I'm drug into things that I don't even think I'm gonna be drug into. And one of them has to do with, right now, with a project going on in the area, that I guess I would have to say, Kenny, that it sort of humbles me to think that someone would call me up and say, "Earl, I need your help. I need your help." And they would communicate with me on state level that they needed my help. Well, I look back on Johnny, and my statement to the Commissioners today is that I assumed that by now, y'all have been through this somewhat, and if I understand, and we have Mr. James Sears here, more commonly known among his friends as Jake, but he knows this, but in the past, I mean, this is the way it will be done, I'm sure, that a Democratic Executive Committee will put in suggestions for the replacement of Johnny Horr. And I'm getting a nod, but y'all look at Jake's head and he'll tell you when I'm right and when I'm wrong. But that's okay. But my message to the people in whole township, the end of this is you four people. And there's a lot of concern in the county right now, is which way this board's gonna go. Johnny had more friends than a lot of you want, well, I won't say you, a lot of people wanted to admit to, political friends that have noticed and looked at him on videos and seen what he had to say and what he stood for. One thing I want to say about Johnny Horr that I think I'm 100% right on, in many cases, people get into politics for ego. They like the title. You know, I honestly spent hundreds of hours talking to Johnny Horr, or going somewhere with him and riding down the road and spent hours talking to him. And never did I ever get the indication that Johnny Horr wasn't about a legacy of doing what Johnny Horr thought was right for the county. I never once sensed that Johnny Horr ever was into this for some type of ego thing. He didn't have to be. Johnny had plenty of money, and him and I love money. We love to make money, I'll put it that way, because it is fun making money, Jack. Somebody, you know, but he was in the stock market, I was in the stock market. But I want the public to know that I don't think Johnny Horr was in this for anything other than the benefit of the county. And the fact that when people disagree with him, that's the democratic system. That's called democracy. So we don't worry about that so much, but his legacy should go on, that he was a man that really thought what the county best for the county. And the reason I say all of this is that the people that should choose the replacement for Johnny Horr live in what old people like me and Dan Lang call Scratch Hall. All my life, we called it, now they call it the Ull District, but it's Scratch Hall. They are the people that need to have, be heard. And you, the County Commissioners, the four of you, are the ones that are gonna make that decision within the next, what, 60 days, 65 days or something?
Sixty.
To replacing. The word on the street is, among the people that I know, and this is probably quite true, Johnny Horr cannot be replaced. But they were speaking in terms of his knowledge of numbers and ability to look things up and study the issues. But it's up to you four people to pick somebody, and my thing to the county, to the people of whole township, is to pick a person they want. I know he serves the whole county, he was elected by the whole county, but don't go in here and pick someone just because the Democratic Committee said, "Pick 'em." Listen to the leadership in that township, the fire department people, that's where the leadership is, whole Ruine Club, the churches over there. Y'all all know who the leaders are, I don't have to sit here and tell them, but let them suggest to you who to pick. Real quickly, so much for Johnny Horr, I could spend the rest of my life and take up all of him to his time that I want. I had a phone call last night, he was trying to get up with me all day yesterday, and got me, he was a county chairman in another county. And something had come up that I had just found out about, and I guess maybe you were gonna find out, or have found out about it, that COA wants some money from us. Well, they want money from Currituck, but Currituck has a campus. They've got that new aviation thing over there. Chawain County has a campus, of course, the Passapatanck in Dare do. We don't. We are not required by law to give COA any money. Well, the message from this county chairman was, and I want to share this with you, goes back to our $15,000 that we withdrew from the court system, the district attorney's office and the public defender's office. This county chairman has been in politics for a long time, made the comment that I agree with. Passapatanck County has, for some reason, got themselves in a financial hole. They built some very expensive buildings, and they wanted to give everybody to come in the rooms some money. And they're in a financial hole. As has probably been pointed out to you before by Mr. Menon Hall and others, we're not finding out, we don't have to give the district attorney's office any money. Passapatanck County wanted COA. They wanted it. And they got it, and then they start going out here in the college and the Passapatanck. They wanted the district attorney's office. They wanted it. They fought for it. They represented this lobby for it. And then they get it, and then they come to poor counties like us and say, "Well, you're gonna have to help pay for it." But anyway, in closing, and I think Mr. Menon Hall can back me up, we're not required by law to give COA any money, and we're not required to give the district attorney's office any money. And y'all weigh on that real carefully before you make any decisions one way or the other. And that's enough of me, Kenny. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Earl. All right, the next would be our announced delegations. Mr. Andrew Wumble, Public Defender.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First, let me say, offer my sincere condolences to the passing of Mr. Horr. I had not heard that, but I found that out very recently, and wanted to offer my sincere condolences to not only you, but also to the citizens' residents of Gates County. Nice segue from the previous speaker into what I wanted to talk to you about this morning. And I don't, let me just say that I came here to open a dialogue, and I view this as the beginning of the dialogue and not the end of the dialogue. I'm not here to tell you what I believe that you should do. I'm simply here to answer questions and provide information about how we got to where we are. Let me begin by saying that I was appointed to the senior, I mean, the chief resident, I mean, excuse me, the chief public defender by the senior resident Superior Court Judge in 2004, and I've served as the public defender for our seventh county district for about nine years now. I was appointed in October of 2004. I created the public defender's office from whole cloth. We did not have a public defender's office at the time. Indigent criminal defendants were represented by roster system of private counsel. Now, that roster system depleted to the point that we had lawyers who were unequipped, not saying that they were not good lawyers, but you had lawyers who primarily did other things in the law, coming in and representing criminal defendants. We had a lot of problems in Superior Court and our trial courts and also in our appellate courts. Thus, the movement for a public defender's office and a specialization in the representation of criminal defendants. There are roughly 16, I think 16 of us in the state of North Carolina. I walked into a public defender's meeting the other day and found out that I was number four in seniority in the state. I looked around and I didn't recognize many of the faces, and I said, "What happened to all Old Guard?" But I am the Old Guard now, I've been in for nine years. When I started the public defender's office and created that office, we were only serving the seven districts, the seven counties of the first district, and you guys obviously know who they are. I located a satellite office in Chawan County. I put a main office in Elizabeth City in the courthouse, actually, no, in a building outside the courthouse. And I located a satellite office in Dare County. And the purpose of that was to locate as close to the confinement facilities as I possibly could. Obviously, our travel budget was gonna be one of the largest in the state. My travel budget is the largest budget in the state within the public defender system. And I thought that very important, that to try to control that cost. I consider myself a steward of the public's money, the public resources, and I was gonna do my absolute best to be the best steward that I could be. About a year ago or two years ago, the second judicial district, which consists of five counties, Beaufort, Washington County, Martin County, Hyde and Terrell County, started having the same problems with their court-appointed list and their roster system that began in the first district. They asked for a public defender's office, and rather than getting a new public defender's office, the state of North Carolina decided to expand my office into the second district, which means that I now cover 12 counties instead of the original seven, which was a plenty, thank you very much. Once that happened, I had to take a look at my budget and decide where to allocate the resources as best I could. I decided to close the Chawan office, that the Chawan facilities could be served from the Passapatanck office. And I moved that office into Beaufort County, which now houses six attorneys and serves the five counties of the second district. So the closing of the Chawan office, I believe, was the impetus to where we are today, when, because Chawan had never contributed money to the public, to Passapatanck County for the public defender's office. And when asked to do so, that sort of began where we are today. The reasons for the move, I think, are obvious. The reasons for the main, my main office being in Elizabeth City are the number of courts, the population, the number of dispositions and the number of clients. And that's why physically we're located where we are and where the attorneys are located where they are. 7A302 is the state statute that talks about who pays for what. And your previous speaker was absolutely correct. It does not direct Gates County to give money to Passapatanck County for the district attorney's office or the public defender's office. It says that the counties shall provide facilities. The statute that creates the public defender's office gives me the authority to establish the offices where I see fit. When you're talking about establishing offices in seven different counties, I believe that not to be a viable solution because of the lack of resources. I can place an attorney in Gates County, but I can't, I can't place a legal assistant solely to Gates County in Gates County. Then you'll have to provide me with Cat 5 cable, resources, subscriptions and things of that nature to support the attorney. Our support staff ratio runs at about three to one, we try to keep it at about two to one, but it runs at about three to one. And that's IDS regulations, and so my hands are tied a little bit about how I set these things up. I just want y'all to know that. We ran into the same issue in the second district, as soon as we moved into the second district. This became an issue about who pays for what. And I will just tell you that I went to every county commissioner meeting in the five counties of the second district. By the way, I'm a, I've been a resident of Washington County pretty much my whole life. My law practice was located in Washington County before I became the public defender, so I'm familiar with the second district, which I believe is why they asked that my office expand down there. So I went around to all five counties. When I became the public defender, first of all, I apologize for never coming to see you. I've been the public defender for nine years, and this is the first county commissioner meeting that I have attended. I didn't see that as my job. I did not believe I was a politician. But when I moved into the second district, I saw how important it is that I have a relationship with the county commissioners, the leadership, the system actors in every county in which our office serves. I went to every county commissioner meeting, I explained where we are, how we got to where we are, as our previous speaker said, given a brief history lesson. I think it allows people to understand where we're sitting. I don't know how you go forward without knowing where you came from. So we set the office up in the second district. I decided on Beaufort County, which is Little Washington, as the central office. It is the largest population, it would have the most court appearances, it would have the most court sessions, it would have the largest jail facility, and it would have the most criminal dispositions. And that has proven to be true over the last six months. Beaufort County's having their own problems with jail facilities, and, but that's an aside. What they decided to do with the help of the senior resident Superior Court Judge, Mr. Waylon Sermons, they decided to attempt to base a cost-sharing arrangement on population. And I will tell you that, and I'd be happy to provide at another time, I don't want to take up too much of your time, statistics that back up that the population was a fair and equitable way to distribute costs. Beaufort County pays for approximately 50% of the rent that my office, where my office is located. Washington County pays 12%, Martin County pays 25, and then the portion of like 6% apiece is paid by Terrell and Hyde. And it's simply based on, and I could go back and show you that 50% of my dispositions are being handled in Beaufort County, whereas 25, roughly 25 are being handled in Martin County. So case disposition is basically where the work is being done, mirrors, I believe, pretty closely a population, and that's one model that maybe down the road that we could look at and talk about. And I just throw that out to you, there was an inter-local county agreement that was signed by all the counties. Your previous speaker made a good point about, about Passapatanck County and the leadership over there and what they decided to do. When they, when they built the public safety building, my office is not located in a public safety building. The district attorney's office is located in the new public safety building. That was certainly a decision that they made, and maybe they made without consulting anybody. So I would, I would also, and will tell them, that they need to be at a negotiating table. It was very easy to get this done in Beaufort County, probably because we were creating something from whole cloth where everybody had original input in the idea. The office was located in a rental space, the rent was established, so the costs of the public defender's office were very defined. And so it made it very easy also when people, when things are defined and everything is simple, it makes it easy for people to swallow the cost. They see exactly what they're paying for. This wasn't an arbitrary rental agreement that, that was disproportionately affecting the smaller counties. So I throw that out there to let you know that other counties, and we're very unique, and I think you guys know this, guys and girls, I use that universally, this, the first judicial district is very, very unique in its geographical makeup. It takes the same amount of time for me to draw- It takes the same amount of time for me to drive from here to Raleigh as it does for me to drive across this judicial district. Now, I do it every day, and I have to do it as soon as I leave here and head to Dare County for a hearing that I'm supposed to be at today in Superior Court. Those geographical challenges present a reason why we need to be working more together than separately. If, if, if we can't all get together on this issue, then what's going to happen is it's going to get decided at a level other than this level. And I don't think any of us want that. I think we would like to be in control of the decisions and where our money is spent. I'd be, I'd certainly be welcome to take any questions. I know that I've, I've taken more time, more of your time than I wanted to, that I really wanted to come and introduce myself so that you could put a face with a name and tell you that I would welcome the opportunity to come back, to present to you any numbers, and to tell you that I appreciated being the public defender. I have tried cases in this courtroom. I have, I have been in district court and Superior Court in this courtroom. I have appreciated what the clerk's office does, and I certainly appreciate the support that you guys have given us over the last nine years, and I thank you for your time.
Yes, we do have some questions.
Absolutely.
Any of you will go first? We'll line up.
So you're now covering two, two districts.
That is correct.
District one, district two. You said the central office is in Washington, Beaufort County.
For, for the second district.
For the second, second district.
Yes, sir.
And just to, to be real clear, there are two central offices, the other one being in Elizabeth City.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I think that's all I just wanted to clear.
Can I, can I expound upon that?
Sure.
And I said it earlier, but the purpose is where you look at the largest population base and you look where you're, you know, the Pasquattanck has hold Superior Court more than Perqmans, Chawan, Gates, or Camden or Currits up, and at about the same rate as Dare. And so Superior Court and Superior Court Admin, which is basically the, the pretrial level of Superior Court, which lasts for a week in Pasquattanck County, it lasts for a week in Dare, will only be a day. And so you look at the number of times that your attorneys are going to be in court, the number of cases that are being disposed, the size of the court calendars, and the number of times a week, for instance, the district court. And that is where you, that's, at least, that's where I arrived at that to see. Thank you.
All right. The cost that you put together in the budget, what is the per capita cost for Beaufort County right now?
When you say per capita, do you mean?
Per population, per, per person population. In words, are you assessing 50 cents, 25 cents per capita, per person in the county to, to cover your costs? You said you were basing it on population?
Correct.
Okay. Now, if the county's got 50,000 people in their, in their county, you would have to have some way of assessing saying, "Well, you've got 50,000, so we're going to look for $50,000 from you, so we'll get, we want a dollar per capita."
A dollar per capita. Well, I believe, when you, when you put it in those terms, let me, let me analogize what happened in the second district. And I think, because I can't answer that question directly, because my office is located in the courthouse in, in Pasquattanck County. So when you ask me what are the costs, that would be whatever the county deems their per square foot rental space of my office. The county provides the equipment, meaning the bare bones equipment, but AOC through its budget with IDS provides the computer systems, the copiers, the printers, the faxes, the, all the internet subscriptions, the book subscriptions that we go through every year. When we, when we established the office in the second district, the rental agreement for the office was $3,000 a month. And so you had a concrete number that you could look to and say, "Okay, the, the office is $3,000. This is what it costs just to rent the office." You can, you can take $3,000 and divide and say, "Okay, if 50% of the population is located in Beaufort County, then Beaufort County pays $1,500 of the 3,000, and then you just apportion the remainder out." That's how it was done in the second district. Because, and once again, it was very simple because the costs were so easily identified. And I'm not suggesting that they're that easily identified in the office in Pasquattanck County.
Well, and that's one I'm getting to, is that how do we know that what the number we've been asked is the right number? And the only way we would know that is to know what is the total budget.
I agree.
How many counties are involved, and how that should be broken down. So those are the things that you would have to, have to take a look at to even consider moving forward. Also, what do we do with our clerk facilities that we provide for you? The general statute speaks to each county having, that they shall provide space for the public defender and DA. And we have that. We have legal procedures and law books and whatever. We don't have the, the infrastructure for, for technology, as you pointed out, other than a laptop or whatever. But, you know, if we were to consider this, how would we get around dismantling this and not being required to have anything other than whatever we contributed to support offices somewhere else?
Can I, your very first question, when we talked about costs, and you, and you bring up a very good point. I think that this is why this is the beginning of the conversation and not the end of the conversation. When I became the public defender, the, the issue of what my office costs concerned me with respect to how many dispositions I had and whether I was being cost efficient with the state's money. I was, I was, and I'll be very honest, I was naive about the effect on the county and its costs. I only became educated on that very recently with the issues with the second district and also with what's going on now with the first district. So I will tell you that I am, I am probably not the person to, to answer the question about what is the best portion of, what are the costs and what are the best portion of the costs. Or maybe I am the best person, but I'm not educated and well-equipped this morning to answer that question, which is why I believe this is the beginning of the, of the discussion, not the end. The second thing is, the, the facilities that are located here clearly say that they are established for the district attorney's office. If you wanted to house the public defender's office or a, a person permanent in the public defender's office, if that's something that Gates decided that they wanted to do, I have, I have two attorneys plus myself that come to Gates County. I do myself handle cases. I don't, I handle very serious cases. I don't generally come to district court very much, but I do come to court. So, you know, we're talking about office space, you know, for at least two attorneys. You have to support those attorneys. You know, once you start setting these things up, we need access to court files to pull case disposition numbers. You're talking about running CAT 5 cable. It, it is not a miniscule undertaking, is what, is I guess my point. I have never assumed that this office over here was dedicated for the public defender. When I'm here, that, when court is going on, that office is occupied by the district attorney. And I'm not aware of any other space that's dedicated for the public defender's office. And if there is, I apologize. That's, that office is occupied by the district attorney. And basically, we do a lot of, we, meaning the public defender's office, do a lot of negotiating in that office with the district attorney. So we do use it. I'm not trying to say that we don't. But day-to-day, researching, closing cases, doing the administrative tasks, we're not located in that office.
John, you have a thing on that? Respond to that. That's what the gentleman said. We're a public defender.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I do have a couple of management comments from an administrative standpoint. One is that this issue has not been brought to management's attention. If the public defender would like an office in the county, one could certainly be made available. We do have a full-time IT staff and IT infrastructure that we can dedicate to that purpose. The other is, the statute is very clear, and the higher authority here is the General Assembly has spoken by means of the general statutes in North Carolina detailing out what our obligation is. And it is very clear that we have no obligation. So from a management standpoint, to talk about what would be a fair allocation of costs, it's already been handled for us and it's been handled at Raleigh, and it doesn't really need to be looked at again from a management standpoint. We could certainly make an office space available, be happy to do that. Statutorily, we're required to do that. It could be done. If we, if we know the details of how much space is needed from the speaker, we can certainly do that. Yes, sir.
Jack.
Okay.
Ken.
I was just wondering, the space that you have here now, is it at? That's, that's one, one question.
No, sir. I don't have space here.
He's saying that the space we have is for the DA over there.
In other words, that's what you're using as a shared space when you're here.
And you can use the word shared very loosely. That, that space is occupied by the district attorney. Yes, sir.
Just to let me speak to that, I could, and not that I've, I've visited there, but in the morning, there's a line that goes down that wall, and the DA is sitting in there waiting for those people to come in and have a little conversation. I'm saying, so that.
That's correct.
What type of funding do you get from the state?
We, our budget from the state is roughly salaries and pension benefits and medical benefits, and then the office resources that I described earlier that are paid for by the state, which is equipment and supplies and subscriptions and materials of that My budget is, it's about, it's roughly about $2 million.
Okay. Mr. Womble, we certainly appreciate the enlightenment that you brought to us today. I guess the final question would be, what do you expect or what are you asking the board to do at this particular time?
I, I didn't come with any, with any pretext at all, and I'm not asking the board to do a thing. You were actually the very first people that I've come to, to discuss this with. Late last month, I said, I talked to my administrative assistant, Ms. Judy Stiles, and I said, "Please get me on the agenda in all of the counties, because I think a discussion needs to be had." Whatever decision this august body decides to, to make, then, you know, I live with it and, and work around it. Preferably, and I will tell you this unequivocally, preferably, the attorneys that serve Gates County also serve Perqmans County and Chawan County and Pasquattanck County. So if, if you dedicate office space here, it'll be used sparingly by the attorneys that come to Gates County. But they aren't only Gates County attorneys. You don't have enough courts. You don't have enough clients, and you don't have enough dispositions to dedicate an attorney. It is not fiscally responsible by me to do that, and I wouldn't do that. Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for your time, and once again, my sincere condolences.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, again, that I accidentally started this, because I have the attitude to say something.
Sure.
And not anything against, you know, I get to the microphone. I, when this thing got started and the newspaper got into it and the county commissioner got into it, we sort of, it looks like to me, to a certain extent, that we're talking sort of two different things to some extent. We're talking about the DA's office and the public defender's office, but it was all tied back to this original $15,000. I met, I talked with the, I just wanted to tell you this, I think this is one of your questions, Mr. Chairman, started calling Henry, but it's fashionable here. They took the, chief, the finance officer in Pasquattanck County told me that this was the DA's office now, not his office, that they looked at the lights and the heat and all of these expenses, and then decided approximately how much money each county would need. These figures, of course, were never given to Gates County, and I think you brought, kind of, asked me that question, and Henry is a citizen. I'll go back, and I told her, I said, "Well, don't you think it would make a lot of sense if y'all had a, a sheet of paper?" The other thing about the district attorney's office, and I'm not speaking of his office, because he's in the courthouse. Well, the courthouse is already that, the office is already that, and they had to build him a building. They do have to have lights and that and so forth. But they did build a new DA building. Well, one of the county commissioners themselves in Pasquattanck County told me on the phone, he said, "Well," he said, "due to the fact that this big building, our rent," this is their, what they come up with, "is probably about twice what you can rent property for in downtown Elizabeth City." So some of these figures you got to look at, and when y'all, I just wanted to say that, first of all, let's separate the his office and the DA's office. Second thing, most of men and all believe looking at these figures, and I think that's what Henry and maybe Jack alluded to, that we want some facts and figures on it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I really, I just wanted to respond. He is exact, he, the speaker's exactly correct. We are talking, and I, and I should have made that clear, we are talking about two different things, and I cannot speak to the district attorney's office. I, I am the sworn public defender, and that's what I'm, that's the only issue I'm discussing. If, you know, obviously, the passing of Mr. Parrish makes this sort of a silly comment, but of course, the, the district attorney, when this issue arose, could get on your agenda and raise these issues. I'm here on behalf of the public defender's office. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll move forward. The next item on our agenda would be a resolution for honoring deceased Honorable John Hora Gates County. We thought it appropriate that commissioners would look at this resolution and, and possibly pass it. Does everyone have a copy of it?
Okay. The resolution reads, "Whereas Commissioner John Hora served the people of the county of Gates for nearly three years, representing the U.R. District of Gates County as a commissioner, and whereas Commissioner John Hora was a strong and powerful advocate for the people of Gates County in causing causes across the region and the state, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners desires to communicate in an official way its deep gratitude for the service of one of its own members, the sorrow at the loss of the member to the family and to the community, and to remember the deceased by a constructive, positive, and nonpartisan manner in which he carried himself in the public service and the role model in which he was and is for all people. Now therefore, here it is all, the Gates County Board of Commissioners has heard with great sorrow and deep regret the announcement of the death of Commissioner John Hora, that the clerk record this resolution in the official copy of the minutes and transmit a certified copy thereof to the family of the deceased. When the board adjourns this the second day of October 2013, that it stand adjourned as a further mark of the respect to the memory of the deceased Commissioner John Hora and the county of Gates adopted the second day of October 2013." On the Gates County Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I regretfully. Have a hard time here.
I see.
Regret this, this day and time has come, but I believe that we accept this resolution.
A second motion, also regret.
All right, so we move to second, and we accept the resolution. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the next item on our agenda would be administrative reports, and first would be our county manager.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to present the September 2013 County Manager's Report. There are several administrative items for you to turn your attention to. We're continuing with our shared services implementation pursuant to the recent shared services agreement with the schools, who incidentally, to their budget, is about $2 million. It's what the county appropriates to the schools annually. So we are working very hard to support them via various means to implement the shared services arrangement. We have created an Economic Development Commission pursuant to action by the board. That Economic Development Commission has met once, and we're continuing with our research on incentives and to establish a communication protocol with regional and state economic development entities. Sharon Decker has met with us once. She is having a second meeting, a regional meeting, in Greenville, I believe, in the coming week. We plan to be there at that meeting. Attended several meetings, and you can see those enumerated. We are looking at improvement possibilities for utilities. We have initially trained our group of part-time laborers, and we're continuing with our technical training thereof. We are also working with establishing a relationship with an engineering firm for water, sewer, and natural gas, and also the project management grant administration, essentially the one-stop-shop engineering firm. We're working through that process. We've met with several. We are working on getting a short list put together. We have submitted a historic courthouse implementation plan to the State Historic Preservation Office. It was approved with one clarification regarding the jail and jail bars and portions thereof. We have amended our plan to include their comments. Essentially, the plan for the courthouse renovation, using money's budget in this fiscal year, has been approved. We have gone out to bid on several items, and we're preparing the funding formula and the budget formula for that project. Moving forward, we're going to work very diligently on economic development, and the Economic Development Commission work, and get some really good incentive policy guidance moving forward. We're moving forward on utility consolidation. The residents of the town of Gates are receiving communications regarding that consolidation. You'll probably notice some blue flags at every meter box in the town. We have marked the meters. The town has read those meters, and we're going to begin the meter reading process. The accounts have entered into the utility billing software, and we're moving forward with that implementation. You can see an update on shared services where we stand with each appendix, from radios to emergency management, dependencies A through H. You can see where we stand on those. We do have a CIP that we brought before the planning board for them to look at, the forms of which we will be getting out to the various departments to begin a CIP process. What had happened is this capital improvement plan, which is the CIP, will be worked on in the fall and winter, and will be made a part of our budget process moving forward. That way we know what to budget for and how to tighten our budget in the spring. This is not for FY '14, but in the new budget starting July 1, 2014. So the FY '15 budget incorporated this capital improvement plan. We're working very diligently with the Tri-County Animal Shelter. They are doing some significant capital improvements to address the notice of violation they received from the State Vets Office regarding flooring and public health or animal health-type measures for disease control and mitigation. That facility will be closed for drop-in, receipt of animals. They have put out a press release, they have it on their website. Our sheriff's office and animal control has been made aware of that. It's going to run for a good time in October, probably about three weeks, as we renovate the interior of that facility to address all the state vets' concerns. We hope the next inspection that they have at the Tri-County Animal Shelter will be a clean inspection, and there won't be any causes for concern or violations. The county is working, since we do own a portion of that facility, using county forces to mitigate the budget costs of that work. So our county forces will be in Cho'wan County, working on our jointly-owned facility down there, and we're very proud of that. There are three projects to draw your attention to. One is the sanitary sewer project, Phase 1. It's substantially complete. Closeout procedures have been initiated, and we have closed out that project for all intents and purposes. It'll be removed from your monthly report moving forward. Sanitary sewer project, Phase 2, has been temporarily suspended due to the funding freeze of the Rule Center. Y'all are aware of that, we've talked about it in various settings. We look forward to having that resolved moving forward. And then finally, I've already given you an update on the historic courthouse project. We do have that implementation plan, we're working on the budget, we're working on bidding out various items of the work. We hope to start very soon. You'll notice that there's temporary storage and disposal containers behind the building, and the county and volunteer forces with the Historic Society have been working to clear that building, and that work has been laborious in nature, it's been very detail-oriented. There are a lot of historic artifacts that are important to Gates County that we're working to make sure that we secure in a very diligent and careful manner so that we preserve those artifacts for future generations. With that, I'm pleased to present this monthly report. Be happy to answer any questions or comments.
All right. Any questions from the board? All right, everything is pretty clear. As I move forward, some of the things we will discuss today in court sessions. All right, the next item on our agenda will be our finance and tax report. The Finance Department, do you have anything?
Mr. Chairman, the finance reports are included in the agenda. The Finance Director is present in the audience if you have any financial questions.
Okay. All right. Anything, if you have any specific questions in the report this month? All right, our tax report. Tax Administrator?
Good morning.
You have your collector's report, and the only thing I do want to call your attention to with this is at the very bottom of the report, you will see the monies that have been collected through DMV for renewals. These would have been some of the September renewals, and we certainly will, over the next few months, be seeing that figure grow. And we, right now, are in the process of working on the January renewals to go to the state. And also, with the discoveries this month, they included our public utilities, which... Let me turn that sheet. The amount that we billed this year for public utilities is $139,407.86. This was actually a tax dollar increase of $2,437.64 from last year. Do y'all have any questions in reference to the collector's report?
Might have some later.
Yes, I do apologize. We didn't get that to you yesterday, and so if you do have any questions, y'all know where I am.
Just before we move from this, if you may have in mind to address it, we talked about Attorney Ellis and the accounts that he has. We provided some email correspondence on how we thought it should proceed. Are you prepared to give a recommendation to the board today on what you would like us to authorize it to be?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Y'all do have the report from Mr. Ellis's office, and on that report, there are a number of accounts, if I actually think there are 20 of them, that the preliminary title work has been done. The only fees that are associated with that, attorney fees, are $140. The other accounts that he has have gone a little further than that, so the fees amount to more. In the correspondence that Mr. Jordan and I had had, what my thoughts on this was, if the board would like to entertain the thought of actually bringing the accounts back in house to turn over to Zikeas Legal Services, those that just the preliminary title has been done. If we were to do that, the attorney fees that we would have to pay to Attorney Ellis would be $2,800. And then we would ask him to, those that have further work has been done, to go ahead and continue with those and get those closed out. And I would suggest with just the background that we have in our business with him, that we give him a timeframe, that we want those accounts closed out, so we can go ahead and move forward with those. The preliminary, the fees that we would have to pay on those with the preliminary title work has been done, those fees would be associated with the parcel. So once things went through the process, the county would recoup those fees.
All right, so, does that letter need to be signed by the board?
I would like for it to be, yes.
Okay, and what we would be asking, what telling him, was that we would likely have to return to the county all of the accounts that have only had a preliminary title.
What I would suggest is that we include a list of the exact accounts with the letter, so there would be no question as to which accounts we were going to bring back in house.
Okay. Are you, you going to draft that letter?
I can't.
What kind of timeframe do you envision that he can keep?
I would not give him any more than 12 months.
All the remaining ones that he's going to hold?
Yes.
In that letter requesting that these elements be returned to us for us to pursue, I would have, we are paying him some fees. I think I might would include in there, John, if you want to add something to this, all correspondence, contact activity records, all of that stuff, so that we can, it'll give us an opportunity to see what activity has taken place.
That's not a problem.
As well as, Zikeas can see, this was the last contact with the client.
Okay.
Okay, I, I think, I don't have a problem with that. I think that's a good approach. I will say that the ones that Ellis will pursue, that we're going to need to work with him diligently to make sure those properties are identified, that we have foreclosed signs and so forth, so the county doesn't get held, if you will, with properties that we don't want to hold.
Right.
So, board, if we agree with that, we could obtain a motion to authorize the tax administrator to develop the letter to be sent to Travis Ellis to retrieve those accounts and give him instructions to move forward.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Right, the motion's second, it's part of the discussion. All in favor? Aye.
And I will get that letter drafted, and I will send you each a copy of that letter, as well as Mr. Menon Hall, before anything is signed to go out, so if anyone has any input and whatnot, or feels like I've said too much or not enough, you can let me know. Also, in front of you, you actually have two requests for refunds. The first one is in the amount of $111.39. This is for Ms. Anderson, and this is a payment that actually came into our office for motor vehicle taxes. It should have gone to DMV, and so we just need to refund her that payment. The second one is for Brinkley Hardware. This is actually in reference to a business personal property audit we have done with Brinkley Hardware. And when we do a business personal property audit, we audit the current year and five previous years. That's as far as the statutes will allow us to go back. This particular case, there was actually in 2009, personal property listed on our listing form that Brinkley's was taxed for, that they should not have been, and so this is actually a refund on that 2009 tax year, which will be applied to the discovery bill on the other years.
All right. What is the place of the board?
Chairman, I've moved that we accept both these refunds as presented. Request a refund?
Second, the motion.
Right, the motion's second, that we accept the refund distribution. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
That is all I have at this point, unless anyone has any questions. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda would be our personnel report, and if there are no discussions or concerns, of course, we could address it to the county manager if we have any, but you have a list of all personnel actions. Our departmental reports. First one is Gates County Alert Disadvantage Management, Billy Wynn. I didn't have any questions for that, Chairman. Somebody have a comment? We have our water department. I did have one question, old man. On the report, and I guess it got my reports a little bit separated, about the number of leaks that we have in the county, we didn't include that before this time, and that have not been addressed. All of the fix, if you look at the water, the sewer department reports, separated On the water department, ongoing, are we keeping track of that when someone calls in about a report of a leak in a highway or someplace in the county?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the public utility supervisor is not present with us today. He's actually working on some leaks with the part-time laborers that we have. We do keep track of that. They have a running board. I will tell you that most of the quote-unquote "easy leaks," which are the tubing leaks, have been repaired. We have moved on to pipeline-type leaks, the four- and six-inch pipeline-type leaks. I'm not sure of an exact number, but I will tell you, when I saw the board, there's probably half a dozen still on the board that need to be fixed. We anticipate continuing until the weather won't allow us to continue any further, and for the members of the board and members of the public to understand what that means, we'll continue working on leak repair and fixes to our distribution system up into the point where the temperature becomes a hazard with PVC pipe. At a certain temperature, PVC pipe is very difficult to work on, and we'll try to stop what we're doing at that point and only do emergency repairs. What happens is it becomes brittle, and it becomes difficult to work with, but we have several months left of good work, barring any unforeseen weather or equipment issues, to really address some of these issues moving forward.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I speak? Mr. Menon Hall, I know Timmy is in our water department, spending a lot of time at the full lane out here that's being done. Are we being able to recoup any of his costs out there at all?
No, sir. He has been spending a lot of time, particularly with this grading that was going on. There have been a lot of breaks, primarily because of the lines of... There have been a lot of breaks, primarily because of the lines have been hit. It's very difficult to locate the lines once the grading changes. You're talking about significant slope changes.
Right.
I feel like that the grading is almost nearly complete. That should stabilize, and we shouldn't see as much work taking place out there. Because once they move the asphalt and the application of ABC, the stone, and the asphalt treatments, you're not gonna have the heavy construction impacting the lines anymore. So, we should be getting to the end of that period, which you're absolutely right, Commissioner, that he has spent a lot of time.
I know, I don't travel out there every day, but it seems like every time I do travel out there, I see a county pickup out there. And I was, I was hoping there was some way that he could recoup some of those costs.
A lot of the work, unless there is a cut, is locates. They will call every morning that we're open for normal business, requesting two or three locates a day. And that's trying to cover themselves, so they won't hit a line. And obviously, we can't locate them all super accurately, and the lines have been hit, unfortunately. Service has been disrupted. We are implementing a new procedure, that when we know that there is a service disruption, that we're going to call or hang a door hanger, and that we're not gonna leave people blind if we know the service is gonna be disrupted. The last service disruption was due to the line being hit, was improperly located, for whatever reason, whether it's the slope change or what have you. The locate mark was significantly far from the line, and we were not able to recoup that cost.
Are we doing the line location by mapping or by electronics?
It's all done old-school, and what I mean by that is it's done with broken rods. So, they actually do probing rods or divining rods to locate the lines. And it's not a, it's not an efficient way to do it, and it's a very time-sensitive process. And you can also locate what you believe is the current active line, and fortunately, you'll locate something else, an abandoned line or what have you. So, it's not the most accurate nor the most efficient process.
Mrs. Chairman, I have a question, and this, on this distribution facility, about the testing, taking these samples that they did in August. As I look across down where they did it, there was none in the Hobbsville area for the county water system. And, I mean, quite a few in your.
Highway 32 South Sundberg, what would that be? Number three?
Well, that is.
South Sundberg, okay.
That's, yeah, that's quite a square. I'm five and one.
Four.
But, you know, there's a lot of area there. I mean, I didn't know that it's supposed to be, they go across the county in a systematic way, or?
John, can you check on that?
I certainly will. Just so y'all know, it's the nomenclature that we use, our back teeth, bacteria testing. And what that does is to ensure that the system is free of pathogens and safe to drink. So, we certainly will find out why we're not testing in Hobbsville. I'll certainly do that.
And John, are these residents' testings, or there's no hydrant testing, is there?
No, these, these tests have to be done pursuant to the public water supply rules and regulations. In other words, that you can't test off a hydrant line, you gotta test off a house line. I believe our former water supervisor's house may be on here. We have some other elected officials' houses where we can get easy access, and we don't trespass and that sort of thing. What we do is we go to the property owner and ask them how it's, I thought it was.
My, my house is also one, had, or has been in the past, I don't know if you're using it now. And they do take it from a outside spigot, so we don't have to bother here.
Okay. There's nothing else on the water department. We have the inspection, development services. Are there any questions or comments? Also, we have our GATES. And last, we have our buildings and grounds. All right, if there's no other comments, we will move forward. We have our correspondence included, our articles of interest, and the county calendar. I do, I do want to comment on the letter from Gail and Phillips, professional engineers, consulting engineers. John, I believe you might have touched on that in your report. We have not secured another engineering firm as of yet.
That is correct, yes, sir.
And he indicated that September of '06 would be, that is last in the course?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. By way of update, Dylan Phillips has for a long time been our on-call engineering firm for the water department, only for water-related work. Kavanaugh Associates was the former engineer for the sewer work. Dylan Phillips performed some work in September and in August, replacing some skated computer systems and zone valve issues, basically the electronic hardware that controls the water system. Following that invoice, he believes, and I'll read it to you verbatim, so you can ascertain what he is getting at in his letter. He says, "Unfortunately, this will be the last work I'll be able to perform for Gates County. I feel a need to reduce some of my work obligations due to my age and some chronic health issues that I must deal with. I also feel this is a good time for Gates County to find another engineering firm to build a new relationship with, as I'm aware of no pending short or long-term issues with the water system." So, with that, Dill, Mr. Bill Dill, we know, you and Ms. Bill has, has requested that we find another engineering firm to work with moving forward on the water or something.
Any idea where we're gonna have another engineering firm available?
I, I feel as though it'll be very soon. We've got some folks that are very interested, and they wanna come out and give us sort of a discerning eye of all of our infrastructure, of water and sewer both. Our intent is to find an engineer that will do water, sewer, natural gas, and other civil, industrial park-type engineering, as well as grant administration, and be a one-stop shop that can really understand the board's needs, and go and, and make it happen from an engineering standpoint. The ones I've talked with want, want to have that going through of our system, if you will, so they can come in and y'all can talk with them as a board, and they'll be knowledgeable enough to answer your questions about where they see things going, and whether or not there's a good rapport between the two of you, between the board and the engineering firm. I anticipate, that's a November agenda item. We're working on that. We've been somewhat delayed, maybe by a week, week and a half, but as soon as we get back on that, we should have it developed for our November 6th agenda.
Are you gonna get several different companies to come in and do that?
We were looking at several. I don't know that several.
Part of it.
Part of the problem is our price point. So, we have to be careful about NOFC and some of these big engineering firms that everyone knows, the Arcatis's of the world. They're very expensive. What we're looking for is more of a, a Dylan Phillips, more of, not a boutique firm, but a smaller meat and potatoes essentials, realizing that we have resource constraints. So, I think it'll be two. We're trying to develop a third. I don't know that we'll have a third developed.
My next item would be a podium hearing. We have none, old business, none. And we have a new business, our surplus plus property request. I believe you have for you, four or five items. The first one is a Husqvarna LT-140 riding mower. John, do you wanna address those?
Yes, sir. We put all these together in, in one lot, if you will, for y'all to look at comprehensively. The riding lawnmower is inoperable. It is obsolete. It has no value to us. The next item is another riding lawnmower that has resided for a very long time behind the shop building at the water plant. It also does not run. It is also obsolete. We recommend that it be surplused as well. The next item you have is the van that resides at the Department of Social Services. It originally was a GATES van that we repurposed to our fleet. It has 254,000 miles. It has high mileage. It's in poor condition. It was transferred from GATES to DSS, so it's not like it was its original home, and it's on its second home now. And at this point, 254,000 miles, and the implementation of the internal fleet fund, the Chevrolet Malibu's with 40,000 and 60,000 miles respectively, are safer and more fuel-efficient, don't require the upkeep that that van does. We have a similar van on the next page, I believe, somewhat fewer miles, but not by much. Same, same story. Went originally procured by GATES, transferred to Buildings and Grounds. It's got 235,000 miles on it. Same situation, requires work. And we need to think about a different method of providing a vehicle for that department that does not require the maintenance. It also has lower, significantly lower miles on it than that van. And you have the titles to those vehicles. The next item is a shredder that does not quite meet the purposes of local government. Suffice it to say, I think it's more of a confetti maker, a snow maker. It blows shavings all over the office, so that the documents aren't destroyed sufficiently. So, in other words, you could glue them back together if you had a mind to. Recommend that item be surplused as well. There are, it's another vehicle that is not subject to surplus, but what we'd like to be called to surplus and to be donated to the Tri-County Animal Shelter. You'll recall, in their budget, they wanted to procure a new vehicle. We don't typically buy new vehicles. We typically try to repurpose what we have. Specifically, they wanted a extended cab pickup truck. We have one available in our fleet. The mileage is somewhat higher than what I would, I would want to bring into our fleet, but given the, their transport needs, it should last them for a little while, and we'll just have to look at it again. Perhaps a forestry vehicle come available that we can procure off state surplus at a reasonable rate. It's the 2005 Ford truck. Its, its mileage is 196,400 miles. And we have done the advertising to donate that to Tri-County Animal Shelter. The value is somewhat in question, in my mind. We can procure forestry trucks on state surplus with 150,000 miles for about $1,500. So, we feel like the value of this vehicle is somewhere between $1,000 and $1,500. What it represents from a management standpoint, as opposed to us cost-sharing, the acquisition of a new truck for the animal shelter for the transport of animals, we're able to donate this vehicle and avoid, it's essentially a cost avoidance tool to that animal shelter. It goes back in line with the county forces providing a lot of the maintenance help, as opposed to bidding out, contracting out some of that work down there. We're trying to keep that budget under control as best we can, given the fact that they do need resources moving forward. There's a title associated with it, and then there's a copy of the House Bill 1060 that talks about donating personal property to other governmental units. We have complied with that general statute with posting the notices. A resolution will be required for the board to actually donate that item, personal property, to Tri-County Animal Shelter. And that concludes our list of surplus items.
All right. I believe we need to address the surpluses on Gov. Deals, lest the 2005 van. We need a motion to authorize all items disposition to be sold on Gov. Deals, to allow that to take place.
Chairman, I've moved that we accept the disposition of surplus assets as presented to us. That motion.
Second motion.
What, what deals?
What Gov. Deals, sir. Yes, sir.
Second the motion.
The motion's second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, for John, when these items are sold, especially the riding lawnmowers and that type of stuff, to bring it back to us, what we get for it, and let's decide whether going Gov. Deals or just carrying some of this stuff to the recycler out there is the best way to go. On the small items, the vans, the pickups, I'm certainly for that to sell on Gov. Deals. Some of these small items, you know, we have sold out there in the past, and it might be easier and quicker, too, to just get rid of it that way.
Commissioner Jurengan brings up a very good point. You could run into a situation where if we don't put a reserve on an item, they buy a lawnmower for a dollar, and then take it down the road and make.
Take us out for trash.
Right.
To recycle.
The next item we have is the Ford truck, we're gonna donate to the Tri-County Animal Shelter. John, you wanna read that resolution, that we have, aye?
Yes, sir. This is a resolution donating personal property to the Tri-County Animal Shelter. Whereas Gates County owns a certain motor vehicle identified in the attached letter and incorporated herein by references, VIN number 1FTRX12W35FA02579, which is no longer useful to the county and should be declared surplus to the county's needs. And whereas North Carolina General Statute 168-280 allows counties to donate to another governmental unit any personal property that the board, county commissioners, deem to be surplus, obsolete, or unused. And whereas county staff recommends that the following VIN number, a Ford F-150 truck, be declared surplus and donated to the Tri-County Animal Shelter to replace an aged vehicle being used by the same. And whereas pursuant to the provisions in North Carolina General Statute 168-280, the Gates County Board of Commissioners has caused a public notice of this proposed resolution to be posted at least five days prior to the adoption of this resolution approving donation. Now therefore be it resolved with the Gates County Board of Commissioners, as provided for under General Statute, Chapter 160A, Section 280, and North Carolina General Statutes does hereby declare surplus and donate pursuant to statute, a Ford F-150 truck to the Tri- County Animal Shelter and the county of Gates adopted this the second day of October 2016.
All right, we've heard the resolution. What's the place of the board?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Right, the motion's second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye? All right, thank you.
Don't have various appointments.
Project ordinance is eight.
Beautiful. Good. Board appointments. We have some board appointments as well.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'll brief y'all on this.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have before you two board appointments, and with the agenda adjustments, a third board appointment. The first one is for the U.R. Firefighters Relief Fund, the appointment of Billy Felton. The second is for the Medical Transport Advisory Committee, the appointment of Ronnie Parker. And the third is the Hobbsville Firefighters Relief Fund, the appointment of Mr. Ronald Taylor.
What's the place of the board to make these appointments?
Make, make a motion to approve all these appointments.
Second.
Right, the motion's second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye? Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I'm the one that has listed as Ronald Taylor, and I'm sure this is just a error in typing or using something. And also, in there, it says Mr. Felton. I strongly recommend Mr. Felton. I think that should be Mr. Taylor. I think that should be Mr. Taylor. Is that not right, Mr. Felton?
Yes, sir. I believe that letter was a verbatim copy of the Yer district letter. It should read Mr. Taylor. Yes, sir. Thank you.
The next item would be our project ordinance.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you'll recall this, this grant agreement that we have for the, the upgrade to the 911 center. This grant is funded through North Carolina 911, 911 board grant funds, as well as our E-911 Reserve Fund. The total project cost is $399,000, $149,000 coming from the E-911 board, and $250,000 coming from the reserve in the E-911 fund. What this will do is upgrade all the equipment and the facilities and everything associated with the 911 center, making it a modern 911 facility. The 911 Reserve Fund account, funds that have, have been dispersed and held and reserved by the county can only be used for 911 purposes. So this is a self-sustained 911 upgrade, using monies appropriated for that purpose. And what this ordinance does is a project ordinance, pooling all those monies and setting a project up to be moved forward, to be completed this fiscal year.
All right. We don't need a public hearing on this one?
No, sir. It's a project ordinance.
What is the pleasure of board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have a question. I know we were talking about the possibility of 911 being put up there for the prison department. If we go ahead with some of this stuff now, it's going to be changed later if 911 goes out there. Is that going to be a double cost or double expense there?
We've really looked at that situation. I've talked and consulted with the Director of Emergency Services, Mr. Wynn, as well as the Sheriff, Mr. Webb. We believe the 911 center, for practical purposes, for the dispatch purposes of the sheriff's office, needs to stay in this facility here. So it will not be moved off this campus. It just needs to stay here, and these funds will be used here in this building, perhaps not in that room. We may do some shuffling to expand. But what we don't want to do is get a modern center and then realize we don't have enough room. We grow, or the requirements of the 911 board requires us to do emergency medical dispatch. We have to have two people all the time, which we don't now, and we don't have enough room to accommodate that. So we're going to be looking at space needs and trying to work that out moving forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question.
All right. Any other comments, questions? All right, we'll call a motion to adopt the project ordinance as presented.
So move.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, the last item, or the next item would be our citizens' comments. And they're all non, we'll have our commissioner comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
The citizens?
Yes.
Oh, it wasn't loud enough. My concern right now is senior citizens, the civilians. At present, of course, we all know we have the.
Can we get?
Yes, sir.
Can we get him on camera?
Oh, I'm sorry. Move up there.
Please state your name also.
Yes, go do.
My name is Ashley Taylor. I reside in Gates County at Carter Road. My concern is the senior citizens' facility for Gates County. At present, to my present knowledge, we are the only county in the state that does not have a senior citizens' facility. The one right now out at the community center is one room and is very crowded, and it's very inconvenient for the citizens of this county to facilitate. Is there presently any planning, our thoughts, for a senior citizens' facility, considering the fact that we now have the property out on Route 158 and could be available and used?
Well, in answer to the question, I won't say that there are plans, but certainly those that has come up before. And as we move forward, certainly, we will keep that in mind as something that we need to address.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, if nothing else, we have our commissioner comments. Mr. Hunter.
Well, I think all of us have heavy hearts today as we look down this table and see an empty chair. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the Horrors family and their loss and the loss of fire Kane. I'd like to thank all of you for coming today. It means a lot to us to see you interested in what we're doing and just continue to come and invite someone else to come with you.
I'd like to also thank, thank everybody that's here today, and we do have our heavy hearts for Mr. Horr. Yesterday, at service, it was a very large turnout from across the county, not just one side of the county, but from across the county. And I'm sure we explain correctly. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I was sharing with somebody yesterday that, you know, we, we sit up here and we, and we battle a little bit. You know, we go back and forth, and you never really know, you know, when you're sparring with somebody, you never really know what you really think of them or feel about them. You know, when we spar and battle a little bit up here, we don't do too much of it, but when we do, we do walk out that door as a team and as friends. But when you lose someone that you, that you talk with pretty often on the telephone, it has an impact on you, and you really don't know how close you are to that person until they're gone. Our prayers are with the Horrors family. I'll be going there. Sins relief here just to tell Betty how, how honored Johnny was today by your attendance and by the resolution. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. I too want to thank everyone for coming today to be a part of our meeting. And as it's been said, there is our heavy hearts here today with the loss of Johnny. You know, we meet once a month, sometimes twice, but this is only a part of the communication that we have day to day. We're on the phone together. At times, we're at different places together, and we have to work as a group. It's not a separate issue. So it's kind of like losing one in the family. And my heart goes out to him as well as the citizens of the county, because we truly have lost a great commissioner. Thank you again for coming and pray to him on this day. All right. We need a motion to go into closed session.
So move.
Second.
All right, motion, second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, we need a motion to come out of closed session.
So move.
Second.
Motion, second. Come out of closed session. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, the first item we have to go on, we need a letter, a letter of support sent to the recipients, discussed in closed session. We want to authorize county manager to submit that letter.
So move.
Second.
All right, the motion, second, that we submit the letter of support. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, next, we need a motion to authorize a letter to the sitting political party as discussed in closed session.
So move.
Second.
All right, motion, second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Third item is we need to authorize county manager to move forward and to phase two as discussed in closed session.
So move.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The next item we need to authorize county manager to do a press release as discussed in closed session.
So move.
Second.
All right, motion, second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right, thank you. We need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All right, motion, second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All right. You got it, John?